I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. We'll have the invocation by Reverend James Thurington, pastor of the Evangelical Fellowship Church 717 West Harrison Street, Reesville, North Carolina.
Let us pray. Do you tell me about our fathers' coming for your presence on this evening? Thank you for this day that you and me, and we are rejoicing and being glad. And Paul, thank you for our citizens of Reesville and citizens of Rockingham County. We pray for our mayor tonight and our vice mayor, all of our members of the city council, city manager, chief of police, fire chief, and all our elected officials. Thank you for the peace that we have in our city. And we give you honor and glory for that. And God, we pray especially tonight for Israel. Pray for the peace of Jerusalem. Then, God, as our leaders come to discuss, decide, and instruct us as citizens, pray God through God our thoughts, give them clarity of speech, give them understanding, God. They were elected to serve these citizens, and they're doing a great job. Bless our city council meeting tonight. Keep us... Thank you for the spirit of peace that's devised in this building and during the meeting tonight. We give your name glory and their honor and praise in Jesus' name and prayer.
Will we all stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proclaimations and recognitions. We have a special proclamation for Bryce Kane and some challenge coins and some goodies to go along with it. Bryce recently graduated from regional high school, and we felt like he would need a job, got in contact with him, and discovered that he'd like to be public works director. So we made him our honorary public works director. And he finished up his job today with no problem. I asked him if he had to fire anybody, and he said, "Not today." And we also have recognition of the fire department for fire prevention week and National Community Planning Month. We'll start with the public works director. Bryce, if you want to step up here. It's gonna be all right. I won't bite you. I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of Reesville City Council, do hereby proclaim that Bryce Kane has been named the City of Reesville's honorary public works director for the day. Bryce fulfilled his duties in his official capacity with distinction. Throughout his time on the job, he met with employees, reviewed equipment inventory, and visited various sites, including the Penn House Event Center and the Splash Pad, both under construction. In doing so, he has helped continue the city's public works department's strong tradition of service to the local community. In humble appreciation, we thank him for his invaluable service to the City of Reesville and its residents. This the 10th day of October 2023. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville. Bryce, you got anything you'd like to say? His parents are here, and his brother's here, and his, I guess, best friends here. Would any of you like to say anything?
That's been a baggie since she was three.
Any words?
Oh, thank y'all.
Okay. Thank y'all for loaning into us for a while. Bryce DePopo has a little gift for you. But those of you who don't know what the popo is, it's police.
This is the goodie bag of challenge coins.
Challenge coins in here. Goodie bag on the police. Okay. That's pretty hip. I might better tote that for you. I'll go back to you, see. Oh, come on back. Let's get a picture. Come on back. Let's get a picture.
Bryce, that's for him.
I'm not gonna bite you. Okay. Let's give Bryce another big round of applause. I'll give you a call sometime soon and see how you evaluate everything that went on. Next, we have the recognition of the fire department and fire safety month. Is the chief here? Oh, there he is. Come on up, chief. As you bring your others up, other guys up too. Whereas the regional fire department is dedicated to the safety of the citizens, especially protecting life and property from the devastating effect of fires. And whereas those members of the fire service are joined by other concerned citizens of this city, as well as businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire safety efforts. And whereas, while this special week has been set aside to remind everyone of the importance of fire education, we should remember to practice fire safety throughout the year. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through October 14th as fire prevention week in Reesville. And I further call upon the residents of this city to participate in fire prevention activities at home, work, and school, and to heed the message of the 2023 Fire Prevention Theme. Cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire safety prevention. This the 10th day of October 2023. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville. Chief?
I won't take up too much of your time, but thank you for officially recognizing this week as the official fire prevention week here for the City of Reesville. We, the Reesville Fire Department, take fire protection and fire prevention very serious. We have several programs to assist individuals with both fire protection and fire prevention in residential and commercial audiences. The theme this year is actually kind of fitting because commercial... not commercial, but cooking fires is actually the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, not only at the national level but here locally. So if you have any fire safety issues, concerns, if we can help you with any type of fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, or answer any fire safety questions, give us a call. We'd be happy to help you.
Chief?
Man, I got a question for the chief. Chief, let me ask you something. Cooking is the greatest cause of fire.
Cooking fires is the leading cause of home fires.
You'll never come to my house.
Keep supporting local restaurants.
And chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm known for putting people on the spot, so now it's your turn. Since you are front and center, would you please tell everyone about your recycling cans and what the money for that goes to?
Yes, ma'am. So we do have a recycling trailer out back, 402 South Gill Street, our headquarter station... our headquarter fire station, Station 1. So if any of you all recycle aluminum cans, feel free to bring them, drop them off. We recycle those, take them to foster cycle, get the money, and then we contribute to the child... the Children's Burn Center once a year. So it's a great cause, financial cause, to support the Children's Burn Center.
And chief, I let the cat out of the bag today. Can I let it out to the whole community?
Sure.
Our chief is gonna be a dada. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Y'all take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
Jason, would you come forward? Let Heywood back there hide behind you.
He's back in the corner.
Oh, Jason's okay. Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, counties, communities, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and lead it. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningful and to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association is... and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorses National Planning or National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation made to the quality of our settlements and environment. The celebration... I've got a little law here. The celebration of National Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise for the improvement of the City of Reesville, North Carolina. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional planners of the City of Reesville and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville, hereby designate October 2023 as Community Planning Month in the City of Reesville in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville. Jason, do you have anything to say?
Sure. We greatly appreciate the support of all of our elected officials, our community, everyone who's been a planning board member, has been a planner for Reesville. Community planning is vital, in my opinion, to ensure that the community has a say in how it develops and also maintain quality development and basically always seeing where you're going. Because if you don't see where you're going, you kind of make spur decisions, and you don't have a guide to kind of get you along the way to where you want to be. So we really appreciate everyone. Thank you.
To our honorary public works director, I know you've had a hard one. Have to leave you. Sit through the door for me?
No, you sit there. But you don't have to sit through it.
It's for her seven years old and for us.
Ma'am, could you only give us enough to express what I thought today? I would like to really acknowledge that staff and all the work they did today. You, the whole staff, I think, I knew you all along until I was your great job, and you exceeded my greatest expectations. This is a special day for very special young men. We love you. And you and I share something. You've got a caring brother just like I have. I met your brother on God's occasions, and he loved you as much as we did. We wish you a very good day. Thank you.
It's just an honor to have you in our presence today, and we certainly wish you a long future
Bryce, I'm the... you know, everybody, every class has a clown, and I am hit with all these distinguished people up here. I'm the clown. Remember, I asked you what the best part of today was? And it was so many things that you couldn't think. And I told you what my favorite part was, was the police escort and the sirens going around and the loudness and everything, because there was something that was really louder than me. And it was... the best part was when they are in front of you instead of behind you, chief. It makes a big difference. But thank you. You're an inspiration to us, and we do appreciate everything you have done for us today. And you need to think about something else that you'd like to do, and give us a call and let us know.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you too. And I was very impressed when you said that. I sat on the side of you and you said, "I'm gonna be a surgeon." Now, you know where you want to be at your young age, and I think that's very impressive. Keep looking forward and all your dreams.
And certainly, I can only just figure back what has already been said. We are certain, certainly, I agree with you. Thank you for what you do. You know, you're just a special person, and we love you. We thank you. Thank you.
And just thank you so much, Ms. Shannon, for allowing us and Bryce to spend the day together. And Noah, it's been a privilege to get to know you and embrace your brother, your family, and your community. We love you, and we're so thankful that you shared your day with us, and I hope we exceeded your expectations. So thank you for being part of Team Reesville today.
Ma'am, if I could add one other comment. When you call out people, you always forget somebody. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Josh and the public works people. Everybody can fib a lot, but he's been with him all day, and he's probably the last still of his lifetime moving, but things like...
Josh, you have anything you'd like to say? He's gonna evaluate you one day, so you... Let's give him a round of applause.
She loves the hat over there with that candy.
You gotta pull the candy now.
It's overflowing. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of September 12th, 2023 Regal Minutes, enclosure one. There are no corrections. I'll take a motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of an application to rezone property at 226 Woodrow Street, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel 149989, from general business to residential six. Mary Ann...
Chiraboga.
Chiraboga?
Chiraboga.
Chiraboga. The property owner submitted the application, Z2023-41, enclosure two. Jason, go.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Mary Ann Chiraboga has petitioned to rezone 226 Woodrow Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 149989, up from general business to residential six. The parcel encompasses an area of 20,908 square feet or .48 acres. The existing land use is a legal nonconforming single-family home that was built on a general business zone lot. But we do allow residential structures in general business. However, it does require a special use permit, and this house was built in 1910. Therefore, it was built before the ordinance, so even though they're allowed a special use permit, we get the permit, so therefore it is legal nonconforming technically. So the surrounding land use is a mix of commercial, general business, and also residential sits on the street across from where this parcel is located. The area to the south is also a mixture of general business and residential sits. To the east, north, and west, the abiding lots are also zoned general business. Overall, it's kind of a collage of different zoning districts, about two or three. Considering the mix of zoning districts surrounding the property and its contiguous directly to residential sits, we find that the rezoning is reasonable. The property is located in Growth Management Area 1 from the 2022 Land Development Plan the council adopted, and Growth Management Area 1 prioritizes high-density commercial development and the expansion of residential alternatives. It doesn't specifically mention single-family homes, however, we think the intent of the plan does not mean excluding single-family development from that Growth Management Area. Therefore, we find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 Reesville Land Development Plan, and the zoning is reasonable and in the public interest. The planning staff recommend the proposed rezoning be approved, and the planning board unanimously recommends that rezoning be approved as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The public hearing will open at 6:27. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak forward? Special...
Oh, hi. Good evening, really.
Come on up. Come on up. Name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Chiraboga. My husband and I moved here to Reesville from South America about a little over a year ago. We bought this house that was, like Jason said, built in 1910, ended up gutting about half of it. So we're just in the process of putting it back together, and we wanted to put a deck on. So when I called for permits, they said, "You're zoned general business, and you either have to spend $600 for a special use permit, or you can get rezoned for $600." So to build our deck and to do some improvements to the house and the yard, we opted to try to get it rezoned.
Could you give the address?
It's 226... 226 Woodrow. It's right across from the American Legion, sort of behind the elevator store. And it's a great location. We see deers in our backyard. Every week, we see some deers, because on one side it's all woods, quite a bit of woods, and the other side, there are two empty houses, but it's very pleasant. It'd be nicer to see the deers if we had the deck on the back. So, am I excused?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would like to thank you for relocating from South America to Reesville.
Oh, thank you.
Very much impressed. Thank you so much.
It was almost like opening them out and putting our finger down, and we hit Reesville. We knew we wanted to be in North Carolina. I have at times lived in North Carolina, and I have a brother in Pittsboro. So we knew we wanted to be in North Carolina, and we've been real pleased with Reesville. Yeah, like the area. My husband works at Unified, and I work at Annie Penn, and we enjoy the community quite a bit.
And I'm sure your employers are glad you're here also.
Oh, yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Are the other two houses occupied?
Pardon me?
Are the other two houses occupied?
No, they're vacant right now, but someone comes in and maintains them and does the grass. I'm assuming the owner keeps the yard and the house up to date.
Thank you for taking the initiative to fix that old house up.
I know. It's fun. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Except that it costs money. That's not the fun part, but...
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak forward? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, the public hearing will close at 6:31.
I'd like to make a motion to specify these... motion...
Second?
Does a special motion that needs to be read?
Oh, it's a special motion. I think it's done.
It's near the back of the...
Oh, I see it.
Oh, okay. So to amend that motion to...
32?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to recommend the rezoning to be approved for the specified parcels to the rezoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness of the determination stakes that all included in the board package, agenda package submitted during the rezoning presentation. I ask, we amend incorporated into the motion to be included in the mix.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion on second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation. City of Reevesville Certification as a Family Forward Employer, enclosure three, and basing a Human Resources Directive.
Mr. Mayor and the manager, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, how good it is to be here. I came and spoke to you all several months ago and asked for your support for the City of Reevesville to move towards certification as a family-forward employer in North Carolina. And please report to you tonight that we are the first municipal government in North Carolina to receive this recognition. We have, um, some work to do as far as a press release, and we will start using, there are some medallions we can place on social media, our webpage, the jobs portal, so as people apply for jobs, everybody will now begin to see the Family Forward Certification, and that certification is good for two years. So I've got an abbreviated, part of this process was to submit the application, and then we had to have some, a percentage of our employees respond to an anonymous survey. So what I'm going to do is go through some of the survey results. You have the entire results in your packet, but I've got an abbreviated version that we're going to attach on tonight. If, as you are looking through the full information, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or to Summer for more information. So it did require that 25% of our employees participate in the survey, and we had 61 respond, which is 33% of our employees. So I was really excited about that. It was a very short survey. It only took about five minutes to complete. When we get to the very end, I'll talk to you about what our next steps are based on the responses to these surveys. So the first group of slides was how satisfied are employees with our benefits and our policies that are family-forward? And you can see that they feel very well-educated. We've got 97% of our employees that believe that they have been well-educated about benefits and policies. Um, they feel confident that they can use the benefits that have been provided to them. We've got 98% of them that are comfortable using their benefits. This one I included, this is the living wage for our area. Uh, it's $16.38 an hour. Of the respondents, 90% make that or more. We do have 10% that make less than that. Now, some of these could be part-time employees that may make only $12 an hour. I don't know who responded. They did not provide me that kind of great detail. So some of these could be part-timers, but some of them could be full-time employees that are still making less than $16.83 an hour. Um, the next had to do with how satisfied are they with our paid leave policies and the way we approve paid leave. Uh, this did include, again, some part-time and some full-time. None of our part-time employees are eligible for any paid leave. Now, if there's some, some of these results may be a little skewed by the part-timers that aren't eligible. Um, this is a parental school involvement leave, so the North Carolina...
You might go back to your previous slide.
Absolutely.
A little more surprised by the responses, can you? Without depending on that.
As we go through these, I'm going to talk to you about them. So this is the first one that was surprising to me, because under the North Carolina general statute, we are required to allow an employee four hours of leave annually to participate in school activities. It could be parent-teacher conferences, it could be a special program, it could be a sporting event, it could be a chaperone field trip. We are required to do that annually, and I think part of this is not that there's a problem with the policy. It's just that we've not done a really good job telling our employees, "Hey, you've got this four hours of leave available." Now, our current policy, that is unpaid leave unless they want to use their own available vacation time or personal holiday time. They can make it paid leave, but they do need to use their balances. So I was surprised that over 20% of our folks, uh, said we don't offer this kind of leave, but we do. We just haven't told them that we offer. Um, paid leave related to parenting. The next slides are related to our employees' satisfaction with paid leave for the care of their children. Uh, we both, we, we do offer a paid paternity leave and a paid maternity leave. This is another situation where we've got this. When we did all that work last year on the personnel policy, and we were redeveloping all of those leave plans, somehow we managed to overlook paternity and maternity leave. It is not outlined in the personnel policy, even though we do offer it. So I have rewritten that section of the policy. And probably in January, February, when we get together for the budget retreat, we'll talk more specifically about the changes to our personnel policy. We'll get your approval for the, the changes, so that they will... But we do offer this leave. Again, it, I think it's just a challenge that we've not done a really good job communicating, and we did manage to leave this one out of our personnel policy. In addition to the paid or unpaid leave for maternity and paternity leave, any employee that's been here at least 12 months and has worked at least 1,250 hours is eligible for up to 12 leave, 12 weeks of SNLA-protected leave for the birth of a child, for the adoption of a child, for the placement of a foster child. That's federal law, and we do comply with that. Again, I think it's, we just haven't done a really good job explaining to our employees, "You've got this benefit available." Uh, so here's the, the slide on maternity leave, and you can see that almost 10% of our employees are unaware that we offer that program. Uh, we've got about 10% that are either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the existing policy. And it may be because we're not giving them time to use for maternity or paternity leave. If they want it to be paid, they have to use their available quota. Uh, paternity, same thing. We've got 15% that don't know that we offered new dads the opportunity to take some time off to be with the baby. Um, we're working on improving our communication with our employees. And we've got about 8% that are dissatisfied, very dissatisfied with the existing policy. Scheduling policy, this looks a little different. Um, during the pandemic, a lot of organizations came up with really creative ways to do work from home, telecommute, flexible scheduling, compressed work week. The nature of our business doesn't allow us to do that. It's really hard to be a firefighter from your living room. So we can't have some of the same flexibility that other employers have with scheduling. There are some areas where we may be able to do some things that will make our employees more appreciative, and we'll work some on that between now and the budget retreats in the early winter. Uh, work from home, remote, remote work, you can see there's 53% that say we don't offer this. We did do a little of this during the pandemic. If that's something that y'all want us to look at offering more frequently for those positions where it might be available, we can certainly take that as a takeaway for me and the city manager. Uh, compressed work week, that's where you're working instead of the same number of days, ev, the same number of hours every day. Maybe you work nine hours the first four days of the week, and you do a half a day on Friday. That's what a compressed work is, compressed work week is. We do not currently offer that. Uh, again, something that we can look at if that's something you have desire for. Pregnant worker accommodation. Um, this summer, late this summer, August, um, there's some new federal regulations regarding protection of pregnant workers in the workplace. We're doing all of this, but again, we've gone back, we've adjusted the personnel policy. It's now got wording in it specific to that new federal regulation, which is being administered by the EEOC to protect the pregnant worker in the workplace. It's basically allowing them more breaks if they need more breaks, allowing them to eat or drink at their workstation. If you normally have a provision that says you can't eat or drink at your workstation if they're pregnant, we would make amends to allow them to eat. We don't restrict that in any of our environments, which can't have food or drink at the workstation. Um, currently, our employee population is just under 21%, which is low. I think a lot of these other organizations probably are the other way, where they've probably got 21% of male employees. Um, I've been here a little over five years. I am aware of three female employees that have been pregnant during my tenure. And I actually reached out to all three of them and talked to them about their experience, and they did feel like we were very supportive to them during their pregnancies. Um, they would like to see some additional paid time for all those pre-pregnancy, post-pregnancy visits. You know, they have to go to the doctor frequently, they have to have blood drawn frequently, they may need to have ultrasounds. They would like to see some additional paid leave for pregnancy. And I think our, our husbands of pregnant women that are not necessarily, necessarily are employees might also be interested in that as a, a future benefit. Uh, breastfeeding workers, of the three that have had children since I've been here, two of them did manage to collect breastmilk during the day. Uh, the other one did not want to, uh, was not interested in breastfeeding the baby immediately, went on formula, and that's a personal decision. But the two that did opt to breastfeed felt like their supervisors and their work area was very conducive, and it did allow them privacy, a place to store the breast milk, the time necessary to express the breast milk during their workday. Um, we don't have a formal policy on that, but you can see that we're very responsive when our employees have a need. We've got supervisors and department directors that have been empowered to make those kinds of decisions. We do not have a specific policy for it. It says, "Doesn't offer this type of leave." It really should say, "Doesn't offer this type of policy," because we don't have a formal policy. If it became a challenge in the future, I think it would probably fall under the Pregnant Worker Protection that is coming under the EEOC, and we would have to look at such other reasonable accommodations. Um, I just threw this in here. I am not by any stretch of the imagination suggesting that we allow our people to bring their babies to work, but you can see that 64% are aware that we do not allow children to come to the workplace. I think our hazards at our workplaces are just entirely too hot. I don't think there's any really good way to address that. Uh, childcare support. At the beginning of the pandemic, we did some really creative things. We worked with Annie Penn, and we worked with the Childcare Center at Woodmont UMC, and with the YNCA to make sure that our essential employees that had to come to work, whose childcares were closed, had the ability to reach out to these other facilities. And we, we agreed that our guys would, and gals would have a priority. And throughout the pandemic, we had not a single employee take advantage of that. Um, so these, these next couple of slides, again, were a little surprising to me, because we've made this available in the past, and it hasn't been utilized by our employees. Childcare at an onsite facility, obviously, we don't have that. Um, I'm not suggesting that we do that. Uh, I am not a childcare person. I don't know what kind of legislative and regulatory hoops you would have to go through to open a childcare. Not something I'm suggesting, but I did want you to see that, uh, our employees, at least, know we don't have a childcare onsite. Uh, emergency backup childcare, this is what we were using during the pandemic. I think this might be something that we want to continue. Reach back out to Woodmont YNCA, so that we've got that resource available. Uh, and then satisfaction with health and wellness overall. I think our employees were very, very satisfied with our existing benefits. You can see, we've got a huge number of our employees that are very happy with our medical insurance. We do have about 10% that are dissatisfied. Um, we are with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Our health insurance is offered through MedCost. They announced last week that the league is moving away from MedCost, so we will have new insurance coming in July of 2024. That may change these numbers, talk to you on form as necessary. Uh, but you really like our mental health and VAT benefits. Uh, you can see, we've only got 3.5% that are dissatisfied. Flexible spending account. Um, I've got some work to do here. I've got 60% of the folks that don't know we allow them to do a flexible spending account, so again, HR needs to carry some water and educate our employees. And then the opportunity for the employees to commit to any of the previous topics. So the last question was kind of a wide-open question. Hey, what else would you like us to know going through the certification process? I put it in this format so that we can put it up here, and you can see that the big ones are telework and flex schedule and childcare support and maternity, paternity leave. What you have in your packet is actually their written responses. I've tried to bring things into categories so that I could give you a percentage recommendation, uh, but you've got actually what they responded on that survey. And that's everything. If you've got any questions, I am happy to entertain those questions.
I guess my, more of a concern is the question is, when you only represent 33% of our employees, it's hard for me to really take that to bank and understand much what this survey really indicates, because if you only got 33% of our, only 30% of our people are employees, we're four of our identical individuals.
Yes.
I think if we only got six of them.
Yeah. I, I think that's a valid concern. We did do an employee engagement survey in my first year here, and we had much better responses. I think that we probably do need to look at another survey for the entire employee population and tell them, "You've got to complete this survey so we can prioritize."
More than I like the instrument, but it just seems to me, I don't know whether we had more management, the department did encourage them to take the time to do it. Were they allowed to do this on, on duty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have a reason, do you have a feeling yourself why there's nothing better to find?
I think it wasn't a high priority to most of our employees.
Uh, how long period of time did they have to take the survey?
We originally gave them two weeks. We did not meet the 25% requirement at the end of two weeks, so we opened it up for another 10 days, and that's when we got to the 30.
Were they allowed to take the survey home and complete it?
No, it was online, and I think that may be part of it.
Online?
All online, yes, sir.
You're kidding about that?
Yeah.
If you think about a lot of our population.
You're exactly correct. You're exactly correct. We've got...
I think that was a huge...
We've got a third of our employees. Yep.
You may have, you may have nailed why we didn't get a response.
I think you're exactly right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Um, one of the comments that I read was, um, "Cheaper healthcare and more paid sick leave." Now, the cheaper healthcare, would that be for the family?
Yes, family.
And, and, okay, the family instead of the person employed by the city of Reevesville?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we pay 100% for our employee coverage.
That's what I thought.
And they pay for their dependent and spouse coverage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
I appreciate you doing this for us. It's such a great, great pleasure. Thank you.
I would say, thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of various amendments to Chapter 10, the mischievous utilities in service of the city's code ordinances related to refuse collection, large trash pickup, and industrial waste, and the addition of a new section dealing with the sale of compost. It's called the Four Josh Creek Public Works Group.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Ann.
So quite a bit of changes, if you took the time to read all the various changes in the solid waste. Um, strictly, it's something that I kind of noticed and observed when I first was hired here. Um, so I started in April, but then Gary French retired on the course about this, honestly, about this time of year ago. Uh, and then we were fortunate to hire Edward Shelton, and so I wanted to give him some time to get familiar, and then get an opportunity to discuss some of these. So I won't read each one, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have about the tickles. But really, as that's kind of outlined in my memo, I'll go over the goals of these changes. Um, some of them are very simple typos, right, we're changing the verbiage in a few of them from the 90 gallons, which was the older size container, which was the max allowable, to 96. That's just a simple, a text amendment, if you will. Um, the other one that I wanted, um, we'll pass this around to you. One of them is, of course, on return trip. Um, this is a camera system that we have issued out, uh, that goes on our sanitation truck. Uh, we have this particular one running right now, the pilot project from a company called Sky Eye View. Um, and again, when we met on two-on-twos, I talked to you about, you know, right now, if, if misswater explains that we didn't pick up the trash can, we really have no means or methods to know that. Um, this particular system offers four cameras on those trucks. The front, we actually do both sides, and then we have a direct shot of the house, so that when the next time misswater says, "Hey, you missed my trash," we can actually click on the truck, and you'll see the image of the location. I think it was, uh, maybe on Ban Street at the time I took this photo. But it will allow, uh, Ed... But it will allow Edward and Dale to go back quickly to view that particular address without sitting there and giving hours of footage and see that particular footage as it drives by that particular house and see real time in person, if you will, that yes, that trash can was out and this is a, is an issue on our end or no. I see the trash can at the end of Miss Water's driveway and it was not out. We will gladly come back and get that, but we're going to charge you a return trip fee. Uh, I think we all probably know that gas and fuel prices are still very high, and these aren't hybrid vehicles that we run to pick up trash, so they, they tend to run a lot of diesel. So we're trying to cover that cost. Uh, obviously, when we get these calls, we're not going to pull that truck away from its current route, so that it's backtracking at the very end of the day. So that's a means and method that we want to try to prohibit some of this that we think is either failure on the tenant or possibly even refilling the trash can on the Sunday to try to get a secondary free, uh, hit, if you will. So, uh, so that's one of them. Another one that's in here embedded is the rollback policy. I know Mayor and I have had some, some issues on a particular street or two. I know that's a very hot topic. This again is on a, a, this is on a, uh, an issue base, right? We're not going out and policing this. This is only when we get calls and complaints that we'll look into this situation. And obviously, after multiple repeat issues, then we will look at fines. We're, we're not the Solid Waste Police. I mean, they're the police chief back there for police. So, uh, that's one of the other goals. The other one of concern again was that there was no real limitation on, on debris and pickup. I, I believe the ordinance is written so that if we have a small thunderstorm or you want to do some annual trimming, that we will pick those sort of things up. But if I'm a developer and I want to throw everything out to the road and I clear ten acres, I don't think that's what the city's responsibility is to pick all that up. So we're doing a limitation of three yards, which is still a, a much more than the pickup truck load. Uh, and then we also put the caveat that if we do have an ice storm or a significant storm, and we want to relax those rules for that period of time, we have the ability to do that immediately, you know, on a citywide basis. Um, and then the, the other big one in here is, is really about ensuring that the trash you provide is in your trash can. And I know that sounds like kind of fairly straightforward, but believe it or not, we have a lot of citizens that will put trash beside it, push trash actually on top of the lid. Uh, I know I showed a PowerPoint to you guys about that. And what that actually does is it causes two trucks to make that route. And so what's the efficiency in that when I'm having to send two trucks around to do the same job? So if, uh, we want, you know, have a little better enforcement of that, allow our bandit trucks, which is our primary vehicle for, for picking up trash, to go through and do that. If a resident needs a secondary trash can, certainly call public works. Generally, we get it out the same day to them. Uh, it will reflect a second tip fee on their, uh, water, water and sewer bill. But at the same time, we all have to remember that the city is paying those tip fees when we drop all that trash off at the can. So we also need to collect that, uh, funding to offset the cost that the city has incurred. So, and then finally, we talked a little bit about this as well. Uh, we do, uh, we've got quite a bit of compost out the yard now. Certainly putting that out there if anybody needs some. Um, but we spend about five or six thousand dollars a year screening that. That doesn't include our time that we actually turn it throughout the whole year, um, but we want to do a small minimal charge to kind of re-collect some of those fees that we wound up paying, uh, to screen and get some of the things that we wouldn't want, you know, distributed in somebody's yard. So it's a good clean product. Um, again, it costs us about five grand, and we could be able with the charges in here and we'll get at least some of that back. Maybe not all of it. We think it's a good service to offer. It's certainly a lot better deal than if you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and you get the bag of, you know, one cubit foot or whatever, uh, for probably ten dollars. We'll give you a yard for the same price. So, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, um, yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I feel like there's probably a lot of citizens that are probably interested in getting a second trash can. And if so, what would the cost be on that? And how would that be, um, charged?
Yes, sir. So the first thing that we get charged is the sixty-five dollars for the can itself. That's a direct cost that we pay. You know, we don't make anything over that. Uh, and then it's six dollars and some change per tip fee, so that will get added to the monthly fee. And with, like I said, if you call public works, we'll make the work board, we'll deliver that trash can to you, and then we'll notify finance to add that to your water and sewer bill. Try to make it as easy as you can.
Do you have value of the cost of return trip fee?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
And again, we're just trying to recover some of that fuel cost and a little bit of labor on top of that. So, you know, potentially, we're on the other side of the city by the time that route is complete, so should be a significant amount of time to come back across town and fuel to do that. Plus wear and tear on a very large expense of fuel. Yes, sir.
So how did you have, you get those calls, complaints?
Quite frequent. Um, maybe three, four times easily a week, uh, sometimes more. Uh, and again, it, it, some people very honest to tell us, I just forgot, and I guess I'm a polite person, I'm much more lenient to, all right, we'll get out there, we'll get this, it will be the end of the day, but we'll get it. Um, but we do have a, you know, my, my staff, you know, some people that, that are more of the frequent, uh, frequent callers, and it kind of comes in the question. And again, there's no penalty if they don't get it out because we're willing to turn that truck around at the end of the day and go do it. So I hope this will curb some of that. Um, you know, sometimes people will put it out at the street in a particular area where it's difficult for our trucks to get it, and I'll hear over the radio where that will occur, and our, our supervisor or superintendent will go out and talk to the individual and explain to them there's a guide wire there or, you know, it's a little too close to the parked car on the street that we felt comfortable to try to grab it with the arm. We certainly didn't want to hit your vehicle. Um, and again, that's another great thing of having this sky eye is we can see real time exactly what that driver's doing, that force and cost on the radar, and then pull that up in ten, two minutes. Yeah, we'll do it sometime. We'll, we'll take care of the work.
I probably didn't understand correctly, but say I put my garbage can out on Monday morning, which I did. I got it. How long have I got to get it back before?
Oh, twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four. I think they got a little bit of a problem with that because when I do that, I have to do that a lot, and I always depend on the neighbor getting it in. But again, we, they, I had to sound out, I didn't do it like, like, it was a weird one.
And again, we're, we're only looking at this, uh, in a, in a repeat situation where somebody's calling and complaining. Just because, you know, we drive through a neighborhood and we know it's a chughy route and it's thirsty. We're, we're not going to go through there and start flagging people unless there's a known concern. Mayor and I have dealt with people who intentionally leave their can at the street all week long. And I have, other than tell them that we have a rollback policy with no enforcement and remind them they need to pull it back, that's, that's the only thing I can do at this time. So again, it's not to go around and flag and try to be.
Complaint due by?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And, and repeat complaint. Well, you know, we have stickers will identify the policy, explain to them, uh, and go from that.
We also have situations where a person might own property in the county, that he might live in the county, and he's got property in the city, but he'll run his county, uh, trash to town or it's debris. We deal with a lot of dumping in vehicles where those don't exist inside the city limits and dump it off. We deal with that far frequently.
If you allow me, I'll just take a little instance we were involved in to reiterate your point. Twelve years ago, twelve years ago, we were, we were looking at antacation, and we were one of the selling points where we provided garlic, garlic, okay? And we had a guy that actually went on local radio program, but he didn't really need that. He lived out in Kansas. He bought it. He bought it from, uh, Walmart, Kmart. He dumped it in the Kmart. So that was his, he didn't need, he didn't need that, but we were paying for it. We had, yeah, it was a tough thing. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? We have a moment.
Second.
Second. Let's do a discussion. See, none of those in favor right here. Next, we have consideration of amendment to Chapter Sixteen, Streets and Sidewalks to add Section sixteen-eleven, right-of-way maintenance to the city code ordinance, the code to five. Mr. Beck. Thank you, Mayor. So this one, um, you know, truthfully, vast majority of the residents in Ridge will probably do this every, each and every day in the summer, right? Um, whether you live on a, what we call a ribbon road or the ditch section, or you live in curbing gutter or maybe a sidewalk, more than likely, each and every one of you mowed some portion of our right-of-way for us. Um, but again, we have a few that don't, unfortunately, then. And so in order to try to resolve this, and really truthfully, to have some enforcement to mitigate, you know, how much, um, grass clippings and that sort of stuff is blowing right-of-way and then, of course, ends up in storm drains, essentially clog that, we wanted to come up with some language in our maintenance, uh, right-of-way. We have our shrubbery ordinance, which I think many of you are familiar with. That's the only thing we have. So we wanted some maintenance of the right-of-way in there that ensures clarity, truthfully, that, you know, the grass strip in front of your house, you know, yes, it's in the city's right-of-way, we acknowledge it's in the city's right-of-way, but your mower and the rest of your yard are asking you to mow that. I don't know any city that goes around with lawn mowers or weeders and mows the little foot or two-foot grass strip between curb and sidewalk. Uh, and so the language that I drafted, uh, again, I know in some of our meetings, we reviewed some very harsh language that certainly might end here, uh, compared to some of our larger municipalities who are doing some interesting things. Um, but we did put some language in here that it is the responsibility of the owner on a developed lot. I want to make sure that's clear. That's one of the languages I put in there. If you have a ten-acre wooded parcel and you have no house on that, you know, like we will, we, because we do some of that, we'll maintain that along the road. We're not asking you to bring your mower in on a trailer and mow that. But if you have a house in the area or a business, we're asking you to maintain that little strip in front of you so our, our whole, uh, city looks better at the end of the day. We force out streets and we have, um, wrecking parts and wreck maintenance, but I can't get around to seventy-five hundred, no doubt how many parcels and mow the two-foot grass strip for you, uh, in a week, right, and then get around again. So we need an abundance of staff in order to do that. So, so this particular section, uh, clarifies a couple of things that gives the, uh, Public Services Superintendent some, some authority to go out and address these situations and have the backing that's necessary to resolve these on a face-to-face basis, if you will. Um, but again, we're trying to minimize blowing of grass clippings out in the road. We all know that's a concern for motorcycles, but it's also a concern from our stormwater systems, as I can clog those systems. We get a heavy storm, it can cause minor flash flooding in the area that could then flood some of our house. And again, we just simply don't have a person as to mow grass strips and that little edge of right-of-way that you enjoy part of your yard. Be glad to answer any questions. Yes, Mayor?
I have one, and it's just hypothetical.
Okay.
Okay.
Hypothetical.
Some people don't like rules and regulations, but let's say I'm the owner of property and I take care of the yard and I have a tenant in that property, but I don't like what the city's doing, so I'm not going to mow that strip. So is that the occupant, the tenant, or me being the owner, who will be responsible?
We go with the owner. That's who we're going to say.
Yeah, with the owner. Okay.
That's who we're going to say.
All right. So it, because we had the owner, the occupant, and the, yeah, tenant.
I mean, that's the easiest to try to get a hold of in a lot of ways, and that's who we're reaching out to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think this works needed. We'll do it. Take care of some households in the town. Do we have a motion? Second. A motion and second. Any discussion? See, none of those in favor right here. Next on the agenda, consideration of an amendment to Section three dash two-seven, Animal Control Officer's authority to order vicious animals which endanger public to be confined, destroyed of the city's code of ordinance, the code to seven. Chief Ray Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some other things to say. Thank you, all. Um, it's caught our attention through, it seems like we've had a big rash of dog bites, and we had one dog that was, unfortunately, had to be put down, there's something to do, two other dogs attacking it. But, uh, it, it's brought our attention that we don't have the proper language in our orders to comply with, uh, general statutes, North Carolina statutes, sixty-seven, four dash one, sixty-seven, four dash two. The current orders that we have does not define what a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog is. It's defined by the general statutes, and it also does not allow for due process for the owners of those dogs to, to have, to, to say no, those dogs are dangerous. So, uh, recommend that we, if y'all consider that we basically adopt what the North Carolina statutes is so that we have those due processes in place and that our animal control officer is being a dog dangerous or potentially dangerous so that we can do much better protecting our citizens than other animals in the city.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions?
We have, what I have had, what I would have said a huge number in less, in less than two weeks to say, that this, that the box this year, this last summer had.
No questions? Is there a motion?
Your House, my maybe staff chief, would you please maybe also clarify as to our public importance of vaccination of animals in some of the clinics that we offer at a rate? Because I've noticed on some of the unfortunate incidences that have been occurring in our community, several of the animals are unvaccinated. I think that might be something to discuss, and how is it okay with that?
Absolutely. Every spring, we offer rabies clinic, uh, and I think it's ten dollars for rabies shots. But what we find is, you know, several of these dogs in these cases aren't currently vaccinated. So then the owners have to surrender their dog for ten-day quarantine at the animal shelter, but the more, the, the more serious side is that if someone gets it, then they have to go through a series of rabies shots. So it is extremely important for all animals to be up to date with the rabies vaccination and also have proof of that vaccination as part of the ordinance that their animal control officer requests it, and they have to provide proof that their animals have been vaccinated. So that's extremely important, and every summer, or every spring, we do our rabies vaccination plan.
Just to reiterate, I think, from where I came, two of these, three of these dogs, these dog bites may have started, and two of those have been unvaccinated dogs, at least two.
At least two, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's probably more because we just had a big rash and, and unfortunately, I'm not wondering, I'm just having to go through the shots, and, and that's, that's just not fair to, not fair to the citizens. But, you know, we had at least a lot. Now we have the, 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 to our ordinance to, to charge these folks if they do not keep them on lease.
I'm just saying, we give the chief all the tools we need to work with this. I can tell you, in my years of law enforcement, I don't remember one or two dog bites when we were captain, they had it.
Well, no.
I think that one or two dog bites, and I know you've had eight the last couple of weeks, I've been over there.
And, and, and another problem that, that we run into as police is that the folks aren't reporting it to us. We find out about it when somebody goes to the hospital with a dog bite, or, um, then the complaint comes in two or three days later, we'll find out about it. So it's important for the public to know, we're going to report it to us in meetings so we can get that report going, and then we can get our animal control officer to do what, what she will do.
Just to add to that, here in Lake, I've noticed that there are more people who transport their dog or walk their dogs to put, used to be in the past, back when it was, uh, one or two of them.
Yes. Well, with their, with their greenways, which is a great thing, but, you know, that a lot of people, often on, on the greenways, and, and unfortunately, you know, dogs pass dogs, and, and some, again, get aggressive, and that's just what we're trying to do, to make sure that we... That's just what we're trying to do, make sure that we make it safe and possible.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second. Thank you, Chief.
In discussion. See, now those in favor, right there. Next, consideration of acquisition of property, three thirty Urban Street, Ridgeville and related budget ordinance amendment. We close to seven. City manager, something.
Mayor Council, so what we have reported tonight is city staff has been made aware of our local relative in the streets in McCullough. This is a spiritual property located at three thirty Urban Street, which is across from the penthouse, is now available for purchase. And we at city staff believe that would be possibly in the best interest of our city top floor mayor would consider allowing the city to purchase that property. Given that we are expanding the penthouse and putting in an event center there, we do see the need for adding additional property, per se, parking, and this property can be a great addition to help with that. The thirty thousand is the purchase price of the property that are listed the road and ordinance and the related cost of fees, insurance, taxes, insurance fringe, the total applies up to thirty-one thousand five hundred. If it would be desired of Mayor and Council, we have attached a budget ordinance to purchase this property if it is your desire.
What is the tax, what is the phrase that is tax for this property?
I'll defer to attorney, I believe it was twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-three was probably close to three. I don't think it's all in, well, I'll say it was three thirty-one street.
I won't support it, but I think I'd feel more comfortable if I knew the tax that it was.
Sure. And I asked our assistant city manager, I know that you guys have done a lot of work on this. Did you, I know you have researched that, Mr. Phillips. Do you have that exact number?
I don't.
Ms. Sherwood?
I don't remember. I have to back and talk to him.
Well, to the manager, because staff will do a quick search and watch and count tax office, provides this much information.
No, that's a problem with the city attorney is typically see that. Can I apologize? There have been a few problems we've been working at. I knew this was the one.
I'm hoping the right will be a support motion. I'd be more comfortable if I knew what the tax was.
Certainly.
I think the whole, yeah, but for the good one, we have to get that question out.
Yes, would be told of order and permission of ordinance. Close to here. While waiting. Fifteen four twenty-five. Fifteen thousand four twenty-five.
Mr. Attorney, this is those I believe there was, the city was aware this property is over there. There's been a lien placed on it, fires. Is that correct?
That is correct. Fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five. It's a lien on the property. Well, possibly a twenty-two thousand.
Mr. Attorney, what is this dog for? This is a property we've been discussing for quite some time. If it ever found available or desirable, that would be considerable for the city.
Fifteen dollars.
The office would be to talk on numerous occasions, we would be to order additional parking in the penthouse. We did investigate a lot.
I don't know that, I've had some discussions pretty about the lien in the car.
Um, we, we tell me, what's the value of that?
The tax file is fifteen four twenty-five. There's a lien against, I don't have, I don't have the information with me, what, now, but it was like a twenty-two thousand dollar lien.
The city had placed that lien on there. That's the property we talked about for several months. The city had placed that lien on there several, several years ago, I believe. Ms. Sherwood, if you wanted to speak on that, because I believe the property was actually demolished at some point.
It was, it was demolished. And that was the amount of demolition, along with several charges for maintaining the, no.
Who's the whole of the lien?
We are.
Citizens.
We are.
I'm getting a little confused. So the five hundred, we pay, this thirty, they only get, they don't get eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion?
Seven minutes. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Two seconds. In discussion.
Thank you, Chief.
No, good question, please.
All those in favor, right there. Public comments? Anyone who'd like to come forward and speak for council tonight? Say number one. We'll move to the manager of the board.
Thank you so much, Mayor Council. I'll try to move very quickly this, but for our time tonight. We are advertising for a coaching inspections officer. The city of Ridgeville is hiring and replacing the issue Charles Williams. His last day was Friday, September the twenty-ninth. We wish him nothing but the best on his future endeavors. Also, as an update for our criminal development director search, we're continuing to work with Mac and his firm and D-Lo's potential candidates we'll be interviewing in upcoming weeks. Couple of projects and city updates for the month. Just really want to push this out there for the cesspool to continue on celebration for the month of October. Open house at Governor Reed House will be on Saturday, October twenty-first, from two to five P M. And then also on Saturday, October twenty-first, from eleven A M to seven P M, we'll have the food arc and brew, otherwise known as the Bath Festival in downtown Ridgeville. There will be a concert during the festival and the band will be the Tams. And then we'll also have the downtown trigger treat event, which will be Friday, October twenty-seventh, from four P M to six P M, with a free movie called Hotel Transylvania, the show at Market Square at six thirty. Then there will also be an open house at Lake Reesville on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from noon to three, followed by haunted trail event from five P M to nine thirty. Also, the Halloween doll costume contest, your nasty hard care, from ten to eleven A M on Monday, October the thirtieth. That is a very fun event to attend. Flashback, do you have a little bit of uncertain news at this point? We are trying to report with the project, but we are starting to see a couple of delays with some of the products. So we're continuing to monitor that. I just want to make you aware of that. The penthouse building project is making along very well. We've got several things that have been completed there that I've noted in our report. And then I also want to give a huge shout-out to all of city staff that work on the ball displays downtown. If it wasn't for our public work, parks and rec facility staff, they would have loved and beyond with this project. Also, a special thank you to Hector Ramirez, Jacob Glenn, and Lindsay Tumble for designing the pumpkin tree that you'll see at Market Square. And then also to Yarborough, Robin Naught, Eddie Stone, Donald Carroll, Josh Beck, Jason Hard, Drew Bigelow, Neil McKenney, and Denise Holmes for their great assistance in improving the downtown displays that you see. So that is all possible witnesses of the ladies and gentlemen that are part of our team. So if you see this, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Couple more announcements. We're really excited to report that Senator Phil Berger and Representative Reese Pearl secured funding for the city of Ridgeville in this year's budget. Funding includes the Pmont, Amy Penn wastewater fallout for one point six million and twenty-one million dollars for Rocky Home County for the extension of water services for Ridgeville for its unincorporated community of Rockland. And then also a special thank you to both Senator Phil Berger and Representative Reese Pearl for the three hundred thousand dollars they were able to secure us for our parks and rec projects, such as the tennis courts that we've been working on with some grant funding and then also pickleball courts and possibly looking at the replacement of the gym at our parks and rec facility. So more to come on that. Two more quick updates. I think I want to give a shout-out to our H R department. I think they've done an exceptional job with our employee orientation. And I think they started it, well, they started it in September and I had the privilege to attend. I think by doing a monthly new employee orientation, it shows just how invested we are in our employees and welcoming to the team and hopefully being able to give over some of the benefits that we offer. So we're doing a better job of communicating versus doing that one-on-one. So I'm very excited for H R to roll out that tool for us. And then finally, more to report on this, but I would like to give a shout-out to our I T staff. We will be doing some I T upgrades, probably in November, which is desperately needed. So we no longer will have awkward TV that has to be turned around for the public in months. So we're very excited in the next month, month and a half to be able to provide some updated equipment for our viewers and our residents to be able to see exactly what council sees. And then also for council to be able to see the itinerary as well. So with that, that concludes our report. Thank you.
Oh, to the manager, I give a double time, not real, real triple time, I think. All decorations.
Absolutely.
Your house is gorgeous, fantastic. And I've gotten so much, this college, this, ladies, citizens in general. So thank all those that are bothering me.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. It's been good teamwork.
To echo what he just said, as you drive the, drive Steel Street, downtown Ridgeville, on a Friday afternoon or Sunday, you see people standing out in front of the decorations, taking pictures and everything. And I've stopped and asked a few people where they're filming, they're from all over. Not just Ridgeville people that are looking, but everybody, and everybody's asking me.
We thought I didn't explain a silver that we done built.
Your question?
Mayor, I want to say, Council, I'd just like to utilize my time to honor the member of the department, Mr. William Bell, who was the program director of the city pastor for twenty-nine years. Just outstanding person, very talented, one of the most talented musicians and directors of it. Her students have performed in Orlando, Florida, Carnegie Hall in New York, Angela Bahamis, and all throughout the whole state. Just outstanding. Mayor, I want to compliment you on your remarks, the home women celebrations that outstanding there.
I said, well, something about my remarks too. The fellows, we only had two minutes to speak. I guess I kind of got a little wound up there.
Yeah.
And the freak had put it down. Bobby, did you say?
Mayor, Council, I'd like to report on my, what I attended for September, but I'd also like to take this time to thank the municipal chamber for what they do and that they have to be, is outstanding. On September the ninth, I attended the pipeline day, which was really interesting because they did a lot of effort and things for the city. And on September the nineteenth, I attended the reason, as we already see, community business meeting. On September the twentieth, I attended the anti-teen special board meeting. When we talked a little bit about the future of what's going to happen in the area. And then on the twenty-sixth, there was a reunion at the cookie club. There's also, on the twenty-seventh, I attended the spark in the Little Two Rush with ribbon cutting. And these were young people who were using their ideas and technology. And on September the twenty-eighth, I attended the resume for the anti-teen group. Thank you.
Diane? So long, dear.
Give me one round of applause. Thank you all. I apologize for my tardiness. So thank you, Kirk, my partner. Thank you, Governor Perry, Mr. Lester, for being here and my access. We have had some really great things happen, and I have something I wanted to share with you all. I wanted to say that the ribbon cutting today, because it's not, it's not really my story to tell. And I didn't have permission ahead of time, and so I didn't want to say anything. And I spoke to them afterward, so I'll share with you so that you notice. And especially for those of you who maybe didn't have to go back. It's very, it's very coincidental, I guess, and appropriate that the Loco Loco opened in October. Because I'm sure as all of you are aware, October is breast cancer awareness month. And breast cancer is the reason that we have the Loco Loco. Because they have been fighting for years and just didn't want to make that step out in faith. And when George's wife got diagnosed with breast cancer, they decided that it was time. And she was, they said, we're going to beat this and we're going to open this restaurant and we're going to do this. And they actually had pink ribbons that they forgot to give out today. So I gave you permission to tell you that story, but pleased that you get the opportunity. They are the kindest people I think I have ever met in my life, in my family. So please be sure to go by there and just welcome them and thank them, because it's truly amazing what they're doing. I, it's the best part of my job. It really is. I have tons of events. I won't, I won't Terry all those, but I have a couple that I want to point out. Obviously, we have the Bath Festival coming up and we are in desperate need of volunteers for that. So please help us spread the word, both up in Devil's Street, at all the R B C booths and things that they need, but also the chamber. So we are trying to help spread the word for that. The candidate forum will be on October twenty-third at six P M at the Regional Event Center. I was mailing invitations last week and we've heard back from most everybody in our R C Ps. And then obviously, our biggest event of the year, the Business Expo and Job Fair. That is on Thursday the twenty-sixth, from two P M to seven thirty at Ridgeville Christian Church. You are all welcome to come to our V I P luncheon from eleven thirty to one thirty. I just need those R C Ps as soon as possible so we can plan for that in the morning. Thank you for those that I've heard from. Big upcoming ribbon cuttings. We have several coming, but I wanted to point out the Regional Reapers. That is their annual game. And he just brought me the schedules today. So if you need the schedule, stop by and have them at the visitor's center. But Brady, he dropped those off, sort of, the ribbon cutting at the gym of R C C at noon and then the game starts at one. Hostess is going to be countywide. They are dropping a new name and logo and just all the things. Still the same hostess, but going to give an upgrade on that. And then the November coffee. A lot of confusion. We canceled the October coffee because of the two-day envisioned expo event. It was truly amazing. All the seventh graders, both homeschool, church school, public school, and then the tenth graders came to the two-day event that we had at R C C. It was really phenomenal. And so we didn't have an October coffee, but November will be hosted by Belmont Mansion and it is a ribbon cutting and coffee connection. So that is on Thursday. I remember the set-up at nine A M. So I hope that you were all able to attend that and I am very thankful. Thank you for the time and that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Hurst.
Well, thank you, Mayor. On the sixth, uh, September the sixteenth, I attended the S and K Free Love Scholarship Fund. Rainy Motive was a hell of a time back at church. And they raised right at ten thousand dollars and each year... And each year, they give scholarship money out to different students within Rocky County. They're doing a great job, and they've got a lot of support by people in Rocky County, especially Reesville, so. Five to ten. And then on September the nineteenth, I attended the W A C P monthly meeting, uh, Zoom. And then on twenty, September twenty-third, attended the Relay for Life. And we're kind of walking, kind of being genetic. We certainly enjoy that, just so proud of the survivors, the citizens of the town. Also attended My Family Day, and it was well attended. And then on September the twenty-fifth, attended Minister Alliance Meeting. And that was also held at East Line Baptist Church. And then on September the twenty-sixth, attended the Human Relations Commission Meeting. We had a full house, so it was just good to see a full house where the seats, the banquet seats, uh, been filled. They've got some great planning and things that were going in the commission. Then on October third, I attended the Macklin Park Neighborhood Watch Meeting, special guest was Alyssa Galloway. Planning for the homeless shelter, uh, being, uh, the records soon in Brentford. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Usually, I do not read everything that I have done, but I want you to think, don't think that I have been resting on my laurels. So I will go quickly, clerk, I will turn the dates into you, but let's go real fast for this last month. And before I do that, I want to thank everyone who came this evening, some of our visitors have already left, but we appreciate your time, for coming. And then kudos and thanks beyond, well, anything I could say for everybody that had a part in today's plan, so thank you so much. First of all, I'm going to start with the Anne Ruston Neighborhood Sale, ribbon cutting for career at the middle school, the Explorer Career Day. Battle for the Cup, mayor and I were actually referees on that, that wonderful day, along with our past fire chief. Relay for Walk of Life, ribbon cutting for Henrose Park Country Club, the boat tour for Murray's Point. A B C Board Meeting, Appearance Committee, retirement for Jason Julian, who retired from D O T. Destinating for, designation for the Marco for Susie Sharp, which is up the street here, across from Main Street Church. Ribbon cutting for Henley CPR Services, McLauren Community Watch, Coffee with the Cop, and that was held at Warrior Nutrition. Meeting greet at Shay Lindsey, a ribbon cutting for La Foca, and then pleasure of the Reesville event. And Diane talked about the wonderful family at La Foca. She did not mention how wonderful the samples were today, and their grand opening is tomorrow. So please go out, they are, they're such a lovely family, and how connected they are. There were even relatives that came all the way from Miami today for their ribbon cutting. So just appreciate everybody who had a man and getting them exactly where they are, and I can't wait to belly up to talk. So thank you, Mayor.
I'm sure you've noticed that council members spoke a little here, the mayor and the mayor and the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm tired of it. Reiterate what's already been said, I think a couple of points I'd like to make. First of all, the downtown has silvered the families. If anyone had had enough to do it, to maybe listen tonight, please take the opportunity to do that. And what I found is, my dog really loves it, and a friend of mine, her dog, we go down and have, still, being there, and eat, eat our dinner sometimes. So it's been really nice and well, and really invited us to do that, so we very much appreciate it. I know it's a little better than this man, my dog loves it. Today, and again, I'm defeating myself, but they was a very special day in the life of our city. The mayor, staff, you guys knocked yourself out today, you really made this special. And I always feel that some folks, you know, you may not know why some of us get emotional, we talk about today, but it was brilliant. And I can't tell you how much, I will always be indebted to you for the way you knocked yourself out today, you made it very special. Fire, police, public works, city staff, I don't know anybody that didn't go beyond what I expected to happen today, but it was all going to be something that I would credit. May God bless, thank you. May God let me end me with, thank you.
Most of what everyone has done, in reference to ribbon cuttings and other chamber events I've been part of. And we have a closed session tonight, and we've got a lot to do, and we're not going to go down the list of items that I have.
Let's hope we accept that.
But I want to echo what Chief said just a moment ago. It just shows that Team Reesville is, is a team. And it shows Team Reesville loves this city, loves the citizens of this city. And it shows that we will go beyond the call of duty to take care of the needs of our citizens here. I truly appreciate too, what you did today. And that family will never forget what you've done. Josh, especially to you, because you spent most of the time, he wanted to be you. And I'm sure you made it happen for him today. Well, preachers at our church would often say, if you can't say anything at all, you can say nothing. And I say that. Do we have the? It was only one person.
Okay, there was only one person for our application for the Reesville Parents Commission, Jason Johnson, seven oh nine South Main Street, and who was you, man, necessarily?
We're going to move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss economic development and real estate pursuant to N C G S one four three dash three one eight. Point eleven A one four two five. And we won't be coming back out. The chairman, the chambers, do I have most people in?
So is.
Sad.
Any discussion? Raise your right hand, we'll be heading into the closed session. Thank you all.